Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, December 12th at 7:00. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Carmichael.
Commissioner Sharp.
Here.
Mr. Van Buren is here. Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Bartels.
Here.
Mr. Lavoy.
Here.
And Chairman Pill.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Having a quorum, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before you gentlemen have a seat, and also Bruce will join in, if you plan on giving testimony, and I'm sure you're going to be up at the microphone tonight, I'll need to swear you in. So if you could raise your right hand and acknowledge with a simple "I" do, do you swear that your testimony will be truthful tonight, so help your God?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I would ask everyone to silence any cell phones, pagers, or beepers. Not that anybody has a beeper anymore, but we still want them silenced. All right, tonight, when you do approach, I'd like you, the first thing would be to sign in. There's a sheet of paper and a pen up there, and if you could sign in first before we have our conversation. Thank you. All right, our first order of business tonight is the approval of the November 14th, the minutes of the meeting held on November 14th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
No movement.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Sharp. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill?
Yes. Our second order of business is the approval of the special meeting minutes held on November 28th, 2018. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Go ahead. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bartel, second by Commissioner Van Buren. Any comment or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill?
Yes. All right. I will now ask if there's anyone in our audience who is here to speak on any subject that is not on the agenda. I see no one here, so we will continue with a review of the public hearing procedures. So this is how things will work tonight. I will introduce each item on the agenda in the order they're listed. While I'm doing that, you can approach the speaker's area and sign in, please. I will then open up the public hearing, and we invite the presenting team, whether it's two or an individual, to present the agenda item, explaining their item, addressing any findings of fact, any hardships, and going into enough detail so that we understand what you're looking for. There's an overhead projector down below there for all diagrams, as we do have a TV audience at home, and that way they can see what you're showing and talking about. I'll then ask staff to offer comments, and then if there's any legal opinions, our attorney, John Zemanek, will offer comments on that. After that, we'll ask anyone from the public who would like to speak, and I will allow anyone who is here to speak on the subject, and I will ask the applicant to address any comments from anyone in the public. After that, we'll have the commissioners, we'll offer comments, and they may or may not question the applicant and/or the staff. There'll be a discussion amongst the commissioners, and after that discussion, I will then close the public hearing. At the conclusion of the discussion, I'll call for a motion and a second on each agenda item. With a motion made and seconded, I will request final commissioner comments, and then we'll proceed with the vote. Once the vote is completed, I'll instruct the applicant on what the next steps are. All righty. Our first item of business, under new business, is planning and zoning item 18022. And I will inform our public, as well as our viewers at home, that this item has been withdrawn and may be scheduled at the discretion of the applicant. So it's withdrawn for now, and it is not rescheduled at this time. Continuing on to our second item, planning and zoning item 18-023. A request from Ahmed Hussain regarding property located at 16 West Burlington Avenue in Westmont for the following: A, a site plan review. Gentlemen, the podium is all yours. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. We are requesting, can I talk about?
Yes, please.
Yeah, we are requesting for planning commission to approve a, we are adding a floor to this building, but not changing the height of the building. The flat, the roof is very pitched, and it's still going to be a pitch roof, but height stays the same. I bought this building almost a year ago in, in January. We wanted to invest more in Village of Westmont. Myself and my colleagues also purchased the church, First United Methodist Church, and we have the parking lot and all. We want to make this as a home for us. And I am a physician, and ultimately, I wanted to make this like a retirement home for me with the office downstairs. Meanwhile, we wanted to start a local business, possible, a coffee shop, a gourmet coffee shop there. So we had the application as early as March or April, or maybe around that time. Somehow, they accepted the application for addition of the floor, and then later, the village came back after review and said that, "You guys are going backwards. You need to have a, you need to, you need to have planning commission approved it." I said, "We didn't know, nobody told us. We have no idea." I said, "We should have told you, but we didn't tell, tell you that. Now you have to go back and scratch and do all over again." So when we started to do that, we had a big meeting with the help of Larry Forsberg. I've been working with him for a year. And we all sat down, and there was a question about if you are adding the new floor, you need to have the sprinklers. We decided that's going to be too much expense at this time, which we cannot afford. So we just wanted to do that, we just wanted to change the floor of the existing first floor and second floor, and change the cabinets, and this is, and light fixtures, and some plumbing fixtures. We didn't have, we didn't requested any addition. We said, "We understand that that's a big expense. We just wanted to go ahead because we have a vacant building. We are paying the utilities, paying the taxes, and already paid architect, close to $20, $30,000." So I personally end up meeting Larry Kernberg, the fire chief, and he said, "And I don't know what they told you before." They said if it is 30% of the value of the building you are investing, then you have to have these sprinklers, and, and then... I said, "I'm not investing that much." But somehow, he said, "There's no going out. Even if you're not adding the floor, you still got to have the sprinklers." So we withdraw that application. Since we have to do the sprinkler, we said we are going to add the floor, and we are going to do these sprinklers, and we are going to change the facade to brick facade to match the village building and buildings around it. And whatever we need to do to bring the building outside to look, and side, and inside to, to, to look better, presentable, and we are willing to do that. Unfortunately, it's very frustrating, and after doing all that and paying architect and all, he's not here. He's somewhere. One architect quit on me, so this is a second one, and he had all the presentation. I could have all the presentation, but I didn't know that he's going to make it and not make it. I, I don't know. I could answer any other questions, but this is an extreme hardship on me, like, we have this building, and paying the insurance, already paid a lot of money for the architect, and paying the taxes. It's just there. There's nothing I could do. I can't run, I can't do anything. I, I hardly could enter the building now. I wanted to paint the floors, do the parking lot, do everything possible in the front, change the windows, things like that. The paint is failing out. I want to put money. I want to make it better, and why run?
Okay. Well, thank you, and we will come back to you in just a few seconds. Bruce, is there a recap that you would like to provide at all from the staff standpoint?
Sure. Well, just three things real quickly. First, I apologize to Mr. Hussain for the poor communication over the summer. Explain that there was some staff turnover. Going forward, we'll obviously try to make sure that people apply for what they need in the proper sequence, and come here first if they need to come here first. So, again, my apologies that...
No, no, no problem.
You got caught up with that. Second, real quick, just a zoning overview, 30 seconds, and then last, I'll talk about some aesthetic considerations. So the request is for site plan approval. As you all probably know, any substantial renovation or addition on a building in the village needs to go through site plan review here. The zoning is B1, so it's in the downtown business district. The use that's proposed would be commercial on the first floor and residential on the second, and the proposed new third floor, those are all permitted. All of the bulk regulations are met in terms of setbacks, lot coverage, height, although I would like the applicant, if he could, to explain in a little more detail about the existing height and the proposed height, and how that won't change. I'm a little confused myself, so maybe we can talk about that some more. Parking, according to the number of residential units in the area of the commercial space on the first floor, he's one short. Seven would be required using our parking rules. However, there is off-site parking available on another property I believe that you own within the distance that we allow. So he is off by one, but that can be made up within a block.
Within a block, yes.
And so really, the only other issue, and I think probably what I would encourage this group to discuss tonight with applicant or aesthetic issues, I'm going to pass around just for reference. I don't know if you're aware, but the village recently approved a large building on this side of the tracks. It'll be the newest thing and probably the largest thing in our downtown, and I know a lot of effort was put into making sure it was attractive, so...
Actually, I was, I was aware of that and wanted to buy the building next to it, but the Mexican restaurant people bought it before me.
Sure, all right.
So I wanted to invest more here, so...
But that's all I have to say, unless there's questions for me about zoning.
Okay. Thank you. John, any questions from you at this point, or comments?
I think I'll pull up some comments.
Great, okay.
Well, actually, I'm, I'm making comments. When reviewing a site plan, it's always, you know, you're reviewing to make sure that it conforms with the, with the zoning, and Mr. Sylvester said that it does meet all the bulk requirements, that it complies with the, the proposed use is permitted, which this is. You also have the right to look at architectural features and design of the elevations, and, you know, request modifications if you feel those are necessary to fit the character of the area, and I think the staff report listed some suggested modifications to fit the, some of the historic character of the area. I would also point out, my question had to do, and maybe this can help guide some of your discussions, with the vinyl siding on the front and around the side, and I assume in the back of the building, the applicants proposing face brick, face brick just on the first floor, commercial portion of the building. So we have two standards in the building code that address exterior masonry, and one applies to duplexes, and one applies to all other buildings that aren't single-family or duplexes. I don't think this qualifies as a duplex because it's not a standalone residential building. It's a mixed-use building in the downtown that's part commercial, part residential. When, in that case, the code, and it's section 18-65, says, "For all construction types other than single-family homes and duplexes, exterior wall construction shall be masonry. Brick veneer construction shall not be permitted. All floors shall be precast concrete type, et cetera." Or another type having a two-hour fire resistance rating. So here, we've got a bit of a dilemma, because we've got an existing building that I assume has siding on it. They're adding a third floor to it, as I understand, and that third floor is going to have new vinyl along with, I guess, new vinyl on what's the second floor. I'm not sure how to interpret this, just looking at it tonight for the first time, whether the entire building now, because this is a remodel project, has to be full masonry. I know that's something where in the past, we've tended to seek the opinion of the, of the fire department and talk on a staff level, but it's also something you can chime in on, or whether, because this is a remodel rather than a brand-new building, whether some compromise, such as first, first, or I'm sorry, the front facade be masonry.
Can I address a few concerns?
Sorry?
Can I address a few concerns?
Sure.
We already addressed the concerns of fire chief about two-hour protection, so there is, it is in the plan, so building is going to be two-hour fire protection. And the, it's not like we are adding another floor, we are just raising the roof and adding maybe like, on the side walls, maybe like four feet of side, side walls, because there is an attic, which is a decent-sized attic that could be used. So we are raising the side of the roof little bit, is a very high-pitched roof. So, and then there is a front facade that does not show the roof. So front facade stays the same. In the back, we are just changing the pitch of the roof and adding some side wall, like maybe four feet or three feet. So it should not change the facade or culture or look of the building. We are going to match it the way it is, and then the front brick, we can do the front brick on the first floor to match the other buildings. So we wanted to follow all the recommendations, and...
And I apologize that I hadn't had a chance to talk to staff before, because I had not seen the color renderings of the elevations to see exactly what the materials were. So it's more a question that I have and something that you guys can take into account, and I...
I also want to apologize. I have nothing to show you. My architect is not here. I mean, I want to apologize for that, so...
Okay. Okay. Thank you all so far. At this point, we typically go to the public. You can see that the crowd has thinned out substantially at this point, so we probably will have no one from the public here.
Can I be the public, too?
Yeah. But I will keep in mind that we are on television, so there are people following along at home, probably thousands and thousands of people. So now, at this point, we will go to commissioners, and I will start with Commissioner Van Buren tonight.
I've looked at the building and I've looked at your proposed drawing here, and then I'm looking at the suggestions that have been made to you about retaining the 1900s building appearance of that particular type of architecture. And without being a great cost to you, I would think that it wouldn't be too difficult for you to, to try to maintain that, that same appearance. The, the new rendering shows no shutters, and the moldings that go around the, the peak and the whole frontage are removed. I would like to see it more in keeping with the, what the building was when it was, when it was built, to keep that same feel. Do you have, already have a prospective tenant for the, for the business on the first floor?
It's my son. I wanted to start, and he actually, he had a friend in downtown who owns the coffee shop. He actually spent time, and I wanted to open up a coffee shop there, which is gourmet coffee shop, some sandwiches, and wanted to attract people and make it like inexpensive gourmet coffee. And I have trained there, and with the new buildings come in, so that is my plan, so we could start as soon as we get the approval. And the, on the facade thing, somehow, my understanding was, we got to make the building look better and pretty.
I know what you mean. I know what you mean, and, but it's, as it ends up, it's kind of like neither or both. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't retain that, that appearance.
I'll be happy to keep the same appearance, and we don't have to, I will happy to keep the, exactly the same appearance, and, and then do the same thing, and thus less money and less expenditure for me.
Because I don't think that's a big cost to you.
No, no, no. We'll maintain the same...
And, oh, then on the parking, I see you're deficient one, but I, do you plan to pave the, the rear parking?
Yeah. It's paved, it's paved already.
Oh, it's paved, no?
It's paved, and then we could, it's in a decent shape, but we could, we are planning to repair it, paint it, or coat it, over it, and then stripe it, all that, and number it for the people.
Okay. That's, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
Just the parking, you're short one now, right, right there on site, you're short one, but you have the parking lot within a block. Is that correct?
Yes.
So that's covered whether you're paved or not paved, it doesn't matter, that you're covered parking-wise.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Check that off. Architecturally, it's not a brand-new building, and I understand they want to keep it looking the way it was. If you would keep it the way it was, and that would do away with the brick, right, on the, in the front of the building, if they kept it the way it was before.
What I understood was, we are going to do the brick on the first floor, and the second floor, and the third floor will not change anything, will keep the exact look, instead of striping or doing things on the side.
Okay, so the brick only on the first, first floor and second floor?
First floor.
Just first floor?
Just first floor, to match the...
And then the, the sides come up?
Yes.
Because of the roof?
Yeah, roof, yes.
Okay. I, I don't have a problem. I understand why you would want to add a, 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 another apartment?
Yes.
Now, for some income, because...
Yes.
Like, the sprinkling is not cheap.
It's not cheap, and then again, if I'm retiring, I mean, I have my son living upstairs or downstairs, and I'm next, and then the first floor is my business, or, or whatever I could, I think is, again, as income also, already spent so much money here, that too, also.
Okay.
And I wanted to make it, make it like a, almost a luxury condo, like upscale gourmet kitchen and all those kind of things.
Right. Okay. That's all I have.
Commissioner Sharp?
Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
That is a, that is a frustrating story you told us about the back and forth that you had to go through, and, and again, we do apologize for that. But you're here now.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity.
It's unfortunate that your architect couldn't be here to, to help elaborate, but I feel, I feel pretty strongly, just given all the past projects that we have reviewed and approved along Burlington Avenue and Cass Avenue, it's a very prominent location. We don't, I don't feel like we have typically accepted vinyl siding as a prominent material. The project across the street is a great example of something that's not, it's not all brick, it's just primarily brick, and it's got some paint, and it's got some metal panel. I think that they, you know, with the lack of shutters, it's already been brought out. I think there's a lot of architectural enhancement that still needs to be put into this facade to keep the charm that it originally had. I'm not sure that just keeping the same vinyl siding and adding a story is going to preserve the charm that it currently has, because the proportion will change, and it's going to look different than it does. And so I would, I would ask the other commissioners to, I guess, consider the projects that we have accepted in the past, what we've requested from applicants for sites such as this.
Can I? I'm a little confused. So, I mean, I could maintain the similar facade or similar thing what you have on the second floor, and when we add the, another floor on top, I could keep the same decor and same aesthetics, and same kind of a western country style thing. I could do that.
Yeah.
Or do you want us to enhance and do a totally different thing?
Totally different thing is one option, but...
I'm confused, I mean...
I think that this is an opportunity, since you're adding so much value to the building, that you want to, as you yourself said, you want to make sure that you're investing in the appearance, because that's part of your value there, and also because we, we want a building downtown that evokes the kind of value that we want to build in our downtown, and also has, we want materials that have resilience that's appropriate for their site. And I don't, I don't believe that vinyl siding is a very resilient material for a prominent downtown location of a new constru-, I consider the facade new construction because you're re-siding it, half with brick and half with, you have to add new siding of some kind anyways. So I guess my position is that we should...
I'm, I'm not re-siding half. I'm only re-siding at le, maybe like 15, 20% of the building, or not even that, on the side wall.
Oh, the re, I'm just, the rendering looks like it's all new siding, because it's green.
No, no. It's not the all-new re-siding. It's the same, same side. We are barely elevating the pitch. We are not re-siding it. If you are re-siding, I'd much rather go for the brick than, instead of investing all the money in re-siding the whole building. And then is, is a fire protection two, two hours of the code.
Yeah. So your plan is to only just fill in siding as required for that four-foot or whatever width?
Yes, yes, and match it. Yes, yes, and match it, and match it, and then make, and bring the all-sides up to the code for two-hour protection.
I don't fully understand the two-hour protection either. I don't know if Larry, if the fire department is considering two-hour protection from the residence versus the commercial, but in that case, you would think it needs to wrap the sides, the brick facade, so I'm unsure about that.
I talked to Larry, he said it's multiple ways you could do it, you could even paint it, the siding, and that could give you two-hour protection, he said. I mean, that's, that's, fire chief said that to me.
That does not make any sense to me whatsoever. I mean, there's, there's intumescent coating that's very, very expensive, that you can paint on the material.
That's what he said to me.
Yeah, yeah.
But we want to make sure we follow all the recommendations and requirements by the...
Oh, yeah, of course, and yeah, you will.
...fire chief, so I sat down with him, talked to him personally a few times.
Yeah, I mean, I guess just my closing sentiment is that we, that we need to invest more in the facade, and maybe that's not brick all the way up, maybe that is just more of the items listed in the staff report, more architectural detailing, you know, a stronger gable can be achieved at much less cost. So that's, that's my opinion on that.
I could do either way, if you want me to maintain exactly the same facade and same aesthetic, I could do that, if you want me to enhance it, we could do that too.
I think that maintaining the amount of detail in existing facade is a minimum. I would encourage more investment, just because it's gonna be situated in a, hopefully, re-driving downtown, that's all.
My only concern is it may not, as you suggested, it may not turn out one way or another, it may turn out in the middle. So maybe, maybe if we just keep the same theme, like country-western type, and then, and then keep it...
Yeah, we'll see, I mean, I don't want to, I, I, as...
Just a thought.
I wouldn't, I don't think that I can vote in favor of this as it is, I'm gonna wanna, I want to see something better before I approve it, that may not be the feeling of everybody else, in which case, you have more freedom to make those decisions with the village, but I personally will want to see something.
I'm open for suggestion, I'm not saying that what you're saying is, I'm not willing to do it, but tell me what I need to do to get going.
Yes.
I mean, I'm open for that. If you want to approve it with that recommendation, I'm open for that.
Okay. And we'll continue around, we'll get to that a little bit also.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm done.
Okay, Commissioner Bartel.
I honestly think we, this merits much more discussion, perhaps even offline, I'm not even sure what we would be voting on tonight with all the different suggestions and so forth, so I don't necessarily have a question, I just, just a comment, that I think we need to know in more detail and more, the exact nature of what we would actually be approving, so I'm open to hearing the rest of the discussion, but I'm, I'm a little confused as to what, what thought pattern is for the project. Did the architect, did your architect do this, is that from the architect, is that where this came from?
Can I look at it?
Well, it's, it's the rendering of the vinyl. It just seems like there's a lot of differentiation between what we are looking at and what we're hearing.
Yes, this is my architect did that, so...
That's my thought, it's just, I think we're not quite there yet, so, that's all.
Okay, Commissioner Lavoy.
Yes, I have a question for Bruce first, something that hasn't been brought up yet, and that is that when you look at A05 on the working drawings, these drawings...
A05?
Yes. The one thing that's missing on those drawings, and I appreciate the staff, you know, all the stuff that they're, the additions that are gonna be included in the project, but what's striking to me is, on the third floor, there's no second point of egress. So on the first floor and the second floor, you have a front door and a back door, on the third floor, you don't have a second opportunity. So if there's a fire in the back stairwell, you have trapped people on the third floor. And I'd like to know if that's, that meets code, or it doesn't, I don't think it does.
I'm gonna make a note, and I'll find out.
Okay. I think the third floor needs a second point of egress.
It does.
Either by fire escape or something, but that's something that's glaring to me that's missing. And second, Dr. Hussein, I appreciate you being here, I look at your project, and your son's project, as a wonderful opportunity. It is a nice building, it needs a little work, it can be done, and I know you've, you've got mixed direction and ideas tonight, but one thing that's happened is, the building hasn't been represented properly, okay? It hasn't represented properly from the standpoint of the building height, or height, okay? It's, sorry, it's my New York accent, height was always height in New York, but anyway, it's difficult to understand this elevation, okay, when we have a picture of the building, okay, when you look at the picture of the building, the third-floor window goes above the roofline. So not until tonight did I know that you were gonna raise the wall four feet or more to get to the third floor. So, back to staff, the building height, is that an issue if he raises the building?
Can I, can I say something, maybe I'll show you in the picture if I can?
You don't have to, it's okay, we'll get through this.
So, no, no, I'm not raising anything at the front, I'm raising the side height. The front height is already there, and there is a window in the front which is already there, which is the window of the attic.
The attic, right, that's what I'm saying. My problem though is that the presentation material doesn't reflect that properly, because the attic window, the attic window in the picture, okay, is below the roofline, okay? So the window sticks down below on the wall, and on this, it does not, the windows on the third floor are part of the wall. See the difference between the picture and the rendering? It doesn't represent it right, not like it's something that...
Can I look at the picture?
Sure, you can come.
About the...
Will you retain the same floor on the third floor?
Same floor, same floor, we are not raising the floor at all, we are just changing the roof.
Bruce? I think, correct me if I'm mistaken, the peak of the roof where it is currently will not change. So they've got a steep-pitched roof like this, they're gonna flatten that out and add four feet of height to the wall...
On the side.
Again, really the root of the problem is just not represented correctly, what they want to do on this drawing, either by aesthetics or by structure, it's not represented right.
Because, I mean...
And I don't think it's Dr. Hussein's fault at all, I just think his architect drew it wrong.
Maybe in the architectural design.
Yes.
Maybe in the architectural design.
Yeah, and I think that's really where the root of the problem is, is you're more than, what I've heard you tonight, you're more than accommodating to want to make some changes in what your plan is, because really, that building is what I, what I call a ground-zero building. It's within the heart of the downtown. You want to attract people to your building, you want to, I want to go, make my effort to go across the street from the train station to have coffee at your location, and to do that, we need to do better than what we see, and it needs to be represented accurately, okay? And I agree that vinyl siding is not the approach, but I'm excited about this, I'm excited about you being here, I'm excited about something going on in this building, because you could make this a really great project, and not necessarily spend, you know, your entire bank account on it. It's something that I think that could be done, there's many, many different types of building materials that you could use to make this look really attractive, this has to be a destination for you to be a success. So I think that more work needs to get done, I agree with the other commissioners, that there's work to be done to show accurately what you really want to do, and that way we can make a good decision on what building materials that you're showing, but this is not it. And it's not your fault, it's just the way it was drawn. So I appreciate you being here, and your enthusiasm about doing this building, being an owner of downtown, but I just wanna, you know, I want to reach out to you and help you get it done right.
Yeah, I'm open for suggestion, I mean, what, what we could do that could be in line with downtown buildings.
Yeah.
Besides doing all brick, which is too, not possible, doing the entire building.
I understand, there's many materials you could get into to make this look really attractive, with banding and different windows, you can look on the side of the building, and the windows don't really line up, and there's a lot of issues, the way that looks odd, we don't want it to look odd, we want it to look good. And I think that that's, that's really the root of the problem, and my biggest concern is not necessarily aesthetics, but not having the second point of egress on the third floor.
We, I could talk to the architect, because on the first floor, on the second floor, there is another steps, and we can extend up that to third floor, if we have to, we can just take that part and extend up.
Take up some space, yeah.
Take up some space, but I really think it's necessary.
Yeah.
Three floors of pulling somebody out of a building is not a good thing, so, other than that, I look forward to, you know, the next submittal, and hopefully your architect can put it together so it's consistent.
Is he or not?
Yeah. That's okay.
There are some questions about aesthetics and if you're gonna respond, so...
Hang on a second.
Hold on.
Just a moment. So, you haven't been sworn in, so I'm going to go ahead and swear you in tonight first. If you'd raise your right hand and just reaffirm by a simple "I do," do you swear that your testimony tonight will be the whole truth, so help your God?
Sir, I'm ready.
"I do" is how you would reply, okay? Thank you. You can sign in, and then you can join these gentlemen. Thank you for coming down here. Are you finished, Chris, or are you still going?
I think I'm good.
Okay.
I think the points are clear, you know?
Yeah, I can sort of wrap this and tie this up.
Yeah.
And did I understand, were you just in a car accident?
Yes, I got a crash, I got a scrape on my car.
Are you okay?
I'm okay, although I was a little too disturbed, but I'm okay.
And you're okay visibly, and you're okay to talk and discuss technical things?
I think I should be fine, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because if not, we can go ahead and, and continue this, but it's my turn, and I'm gonna talk a little bit first, and then you can go ahead and speak afterwards. But I'm not sure what attracted you to the building, but when you come into a B1 area, it brings greater responsibility than in a direct residential area. So you are in our B1 downtown area, it's also a TIF district at the same time, which is a tax incremental financing district, so we're looking for specific things, as far as sales tax generating businesses, we're also looking to establish a certain look to the downtown, because it looks like there's going to be some major redevelopment. We have one project, I think you saw the picture, this is a $20 million project getting ready to roll, that's been approved by us, there's another one working its way down, and there's a couple more that are rumored. So what's important to us is that the B1 area have a look and charm, and when you're building new, that's one thing, when you're taking a look at older buildings, we want them to fall into a certain vintage and era, so that there's some looking alike, and that we don't have things that look out of place. Now, this building is one of the tougher buildings in town, and, you know, everybody likes something different, they say that beauty is in the eye of the beholder. So you obviously purchased this building, perhaps it was because it was a great price, perhaps there was a business deal, perhaps you loved the way it looked. Whatever the case may be, or a combination of those, it's our job to make sure that as this building gets redeveloped, that it continues to be a step forward and not a step backwards. That being said, you brought up some interesting things, and you talked about the interior being like a luxury condo, and you want to have luxury kitchens, it's a place you want to retire to. If those things are all true, I don't think the outside matches that. That outside, whether it's the black and white drawings we have, or this current color picture which we just got a little bit ago, it was not submitted with the original detail, does not look to me like it's luxury condo. There's a mismatch right off the bat. Now, downstairs, I thought I heard you talk about a coffee shop, but I also thought I heard you talk about a practice for yourself in your retirement years, you know, so if he gets a coffee shop going, are you throwing him out so you can see patients? Are we gonna have patients and coffee together? I think we need to go ahead and get a little bit more comprehensive plan, both for what the business purpose is, because that's one of the things we're looking at in the site plan, is what's going to go in there, and depending on the business, if that becomes a restaurant, because you talked about sandwiches and things, the expense of putting a kitchen in is going to be tremendous, to Page County Health Department is going to be high, and then the seating requirements are going to change the parking requirements. So that should all be discussed and thought about in advance, because right now, you're deficient by one spot, but if you end up with seating for 20 people, this may be a whole different parking situation, and I think these things should be looked at ahead of time. So, those are just a couple of my initial thoughts, but there are items in the staff report as far as gabling windows, trim around the windows, we talked a little bit about brick tonight, whether there should be more brick, I don't think anybody wants to see less brick, some awnings are appropriate for the vintage we're looking at, gooseneck lighting, blade signage and things like that, although it's hard to talk about signage when we don't know what the business may be now or in the future. But those are all things, so what I'm going to recommend, and also because your architect had the unfortunate circumstances to have an accident and arrive late, so we didn't really get to see a great presentation earlier with all the detail on things, is we can go ahead and we can continue this for a month, which gives you a chance to work with Bruce, who's now been on board and is getting acclimated here as a new person at the Village of Westmont, to look at the things that are in both the report that he's helped put together, as well as the comments that various commissioners have. I mean, I thought I heard it very clear from these three commissioners over here, that they need to see more detail on the front of that building, and possibly even wrapping around the sides, to go ahead and give an approval vote. So, in these kinds of circumstances, we could go ahead and continue it, it's a live item, you can make the changes and things like that, and we can look at it again in a month, sometimes people have even taken two months, because they want to spend the time and do it right. Because whatever we do, that's how it's gonna go to the village board, so there's not gonna be changes in between, we're gonna approve the site plan, and it needs to be as accurate as possible. I also can tell you that on the third floor, there will need to be a second means of egress, and that in and of itself is going to require some redoing, because right now, there's no safe way out if there is a fire on the back staircase.
Well, that was considered in the, in the design, but the understanding from the, from the requirements of the village is that we provide access to the windows in case of in case of emergency, which was the reason why the windows were low.
On the third story? Which is the reason the windows were what?
Were low, the sill, that's why we brought the sills a little too low, because the requirement was that we should make access or egress, sorry, escape from the windows in case of emergency.
So low window sills?
Well, there is a requirement for emergency access windows in residential, for example, for basements that, you know, a human can, can get out and, and that required, then the windows are oftentimes lowered. And maybe the fire department reviewed this and said, in lieu of another stairway access or fire escape, if the windows, for example, out front can be accessible by a person, then a, a fire truck can help people get out. But again, without the fire department chiming in on that, I'm like, you know, I don't think you should be comfortable approving that. So again, that's another reason to continue this and have the fire department chime in on the requirements or, or the building department.
Yeah, and I think that would be something, Bruce, you would wanna talk to Larry Kaufman and get that squared away. So I appreciate the enthusiasm and I like anybody who's going to enhance the downtown. I wanna make sure that we take a step forward as opposed to going a half step backwards. You know, you're gonna have a $20 million building directly across the street, you're gonna have trains, the Burlington Metro, as you probably are aware, and that may be one of the reasons that attracted you to the property, is the busiest train line in the Chicago metropolitan area. And anybody who's had a wait at those gates knows how many trains come through there continuously. So I wanna make sure that that looks good. You know, right now, it's very nondescript, it's very bland, it's very plain, and it needs to be, I don't wanna use the word brighter, 'cause I'm not looking for you to brighten it up, but it certainly needs to look like more of a statement building. That's what we wanna see as we enhance the buildings down there. I believe that some of the buildings in the downtown will be removed in time as we see newer construction and bigger construction and assemblage of property come through. But this is a great opportunity, as a couple of commissioners pointed out, to go ahead and see us take that to the next step. Now, I understand that you need proper direction, I got that. And so I believe there are enough statement, or excuse me, enough items in the staff report, plus the three or four that we heard tonight, to combine that Bruce could put that together, work with you on an individual basis and review that and then have us come back with some new drawings that are updated to reflect exactly what you're gonna see and what you're going to do in the future. Does that sound like a workable agreement?
Yeah.
Because right now, we have too many different variations and I think you're going to end up with a negative vote. I'd rather not have a vote, I'd rather continue this and work on it a little more, come back in a month, because once we're done with it, it goes pretty quick through the village board. It's our job to do the heavy work and get through it all and make sure it's all set so that it can go through smoothly.
Yeah, but the coffee shop, I mean, I wanna open it, if not my building, maybe the new construction, we could rent it or open it, that's a whole different issue. But we will comply with whatever requirement for the commercial, if, if that's not the appropriate place for the business, we could rent it out and you guys could help us out in that and then maybe think about office or practice or attorney's office, things, things like that.
Well, and this is where it gets complex, because in the B1 district, these are the, the, um, these are the details that happens in the B1 district, as you get into non-sales tax generating businesses, they all have to be approved through us, because the B1 is designed to have retail. So anything that's not going to be retail, restaurant, that kind of thing where it's generating sales tax, has to come before us again, so in a way, it's a good idea to give some more thought to that and put a comprehensive picture together so that the three of you, and more if their team is bigger, but at least the three of you, have a good, clear idea of where you wanna go. But the big thing is with the front and making it look and enhancing the front even more with some of the techniques that have been given in the staff write-up.
And Bruce, when you calculated the parking requirements of seven, obviously you took into account the residential units and then for the first floor, was there a specific use or was it a low versus medium versus high intensity use?
You know, Khan calculated that and I didn't ask him if he used the low or the medium.
Okay.
I'm assuming he did not use the high.
I'm assuming it was probably the low, given probably the size.
Right.
But to that point, and this was commented on earlier, depending on the use that ultimately goes in there, it may affect the underlying parking requirements. So what the village staff does is guesses, gives a best estimate based on what they think is the most likely use to go in there, like a low volume commercial use, like a small retail shop, and calculates the parking requirement. But if the use is more intense than what staff initially estimated, then you'd have to find a way to provide more parking or you'd have to come in for a variance, which again would come to this commission.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, my first thing is to get this building going, I mean, and it doesn't matter about the business, I could do any business or rent it out or work with village about what is appropriate business village thinks and I could work on that. But my main thing is to definitely get this building going. It's not like I wanted to do more congestion in the village by opening up a coffee shop or something, that was an idea. But whatever you suggest, a shop or thing or anything, I'm open for it and then maybe just rent it out for, for now, so.
Well, that's a possibility, that's not really the goal of what this commission does. We, we look at the black and white of what we have in front of us and right now, I think there's enough questions where it's my recommendation, but it's ultimately your decision, it's my recommendation that you request that we do a continuance and then meet with Bruce in the next days and weeks and get this cleaned up a little better for the next time before us.
Yeah, I accept your recommendation gladly and appreciate and thank everybody for your time and suggestion and I will thank Bruce ahead of time for working with me.
Sure.
And we will encourage Bruce to do that, so to make this formal, I'm going to request a motion here, uh, so that we can go ahead and vote on that, so, um, yes, I'm sorry, Bruce.
Before there's a motion, a request from me as staff from you, is if you can provide any specific direction for both the applicant and me to go in with regards to appearance. And one idea, you could either show support or not for this, is just trying to maintain as much of the, I believe you referred to it as the country western style of the appearance now with the addition of a third floor. That's one thing that you as a group could say you'd be comfortable with and then we'll go that direction. Or strip off all of the country western detailing and turn it into a, a modern architecture building with a lot of brick and, and not so much of the old timey detailing, if that's what you would be comfortable with. If you can give us some kind of direction, it'll be easier for us to come back with something for you, otherwise we'll just continue to struggle with. What, what should we show you?
Well, I, I think from the group that we've heard, we're looking at trying to maintain the 40s look and continue through that, through the use of everything from awnings to gooseneck lighting to, I like some of the, there were some photos in the staff report that had some nice architectural detail at the top of the building, some of those kind of examples, perhaps even two-tone brick like we see on the Amber Cafe, there's a couple of different ways to do it, looking to make sure windows align and things like that, those would be some of the areas to start with.
I was gonna say, what about wrapping? There was one suggestion in the staff report about the applicant shows face brick on the first floor area and staff suggested wrapping that around on, I think, at least one side of the building.
The visible side.
The visible side, so that it has a more uniform.
The east side.
The east side. Is that something that, you know?
And to clarify, that was actually my idea that Khan included in the staff report, it wasn't necessarily to take brick siding all the way along the side, but just to wrap the corner, because it's my opinion that.
And some of it, they have to decide what the budget is also, so that has to be a working project where you look at what the budget is and what do you have to go ahead. But if you're trying to achieve a luxury condo feel, then you wanna have the outside looking the same.
So what?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, based on what Bruce said now, I, I think it, it would be a good idea, what we have been trying to do was to bring the old historial, historical look of the building and add a bit of contemporary to it. And one of the things that has been a challenge, because I, I read their report, they said that they love the gable feel of the building, but then we have the art restriction, the art restriction will not allow us to do what is existing on that building now, which was why we, even though we tried to put that gable, unfortunately, what the instruction I was given was to bring, you see the drive to show the new, because we went beyond that, we had actually done a whole different thing since that report came out, so what we have is a little bit different, I don't know if we still want to go on and do it, if we are asking for continuance, but I just want to put it out there that that gable feel might not be, I mean, since we are having a third floor, to have that in addition to it will be exceeding the art restriction in the B1 district, so I just want to bring that up before, before we leave here.
Well, while that may be true, I think there are some architectural things that could be done with this area where the four boxes are. This looks really plain and simple and, and I think that could be dressed up and enhanced quite a bit. It may not be a full gable like we see in some of the drawings that we've seen, but I think there's some work that could be done there, either through contrasting colors or different, I think it was Commissioner Sharp talked about some of the different finishes that could be used, at least on the front of the building.
Mr. Sheriff, if I could, I could add to that.
I'm sorry?
If I could add to your comment, one of the things that I see as far as a very direct instruction for Bruce would be what this really lends itself to, just by taking something off of this drawing that might be good for the, the elevations, is the banding. The banding, you have that white band across the front of the building, if that could carry around the sides, it breaks up that big three-story color, you can actually change the colors in between, but that banding can travel around the side of the building, even between the second and the third story. But you, you attempted to do that vertically, but then there would have to be a change in siding of material here, maybe to a shake or something like that, to break up the, the way the, the banding and the, the treatments are being used. So I think that the treatments and the way that it's being done, even with a lot of the new materials like hardy plank and that kinda thing, that there are shakes, there are different size shakes, there's different types of siding that are very durable, very long-lasting, and you can really enhance this building with color. And variable colors that really blend itself together. You know, the pastel colors where it's not all one color, three stories of one color and I, I think the, the banding will lend itself to breaking that up. So if that's a specific direction for, for Bruce, I think that might be helpful.
I think that's a great idea, that could do a separate kind of thing and add more aesthetic to the.
Colors that are complementary to each other.
Color complementary and then which can kind of break the monotone of that side, visible side.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's not spending.
That's not expensive.
A lot of money, it's, it's making it look a lot better than that elevation shows.
That's a good suggestion.
That's a great idea. Wally has a great one, too.
On this current roof line, the peak that you see in front represents the actual current pitch of the roof, correct? The peak on, this is a photo of the building.
Yes.
The peak that you see on the front, on the facade, is the actual current roof pitch, correct?
Ah, yes, but we push it up a little, yes.
No, no, I understand. When you push it up, that peak will go like this.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay? Should still have the peak, but then the moldings, there's heavy molding on this, on the eve that comes out, that should be retained to keep that appearance, that feel. This will almost, this will actually almost be a full, like this, if you're gonna represent the, the, the current roof line, but then it should have the same kinda heavy.
The molding.
Molding on it.
Yes, we are not going to change the front facade and keep the same thing, maybe enhance it a little bit.
We, we intend to keep the molding, like you said, but because of the art restriction, because if we push that gable as it is a little up, we're already at 39, if we push it a little, we're supposed to go not higher than 40, which is the restrictive height. And that is why we have to keep it a little back down and still try to keep the gable, but we'll go ahead and work on it, we'll, we'll see what we can do to, to, I mean, to address your concern.
Yes.
And then one more question, just for staff, again, so we have a, a productive discussion and come back with something that, that you're looking for. There was a comment on the other side about maintaining a consistent window height and I'm not clear what that means and I wanna be clear, so we can change it if that needs changing. And then I wonder if it has to do with center window on the third floor needing to be lower because that's how the fire access is provided, but.
Yes, that was my comment and, you know, I just can't tell enough by the picture of what, if that's looking correct or not, on, based on the floor plan and where those windows are, based on matching the black and white copy, I, I just can't tell if it's right or not.
So you just wanna make sure that the, whatever color elevations are a correct and accurate reflection of the actual.
Yes, and, and a little more, Bruce, if, if we can go and do a different treatment on the corners of the building, where you can actually show, you know, corner molding, you know, on the outside corners, that could be a different color than the siding and that goes all the way up and your banding ties into that. And then, you know, possible option, as Commissioner Van Buren suggested, is that this whole roof line could be added and extended and kept the same. So this could be the attic above the third floor.
And still not exceed our height requirement.
And still not exceed the height requirement, so you could maintain that and just move it up. Get your third floor done the way you need to have done to increase the square footage for the third floor, but maintain that, that roof line in the front of the building by shifting that roof line up and then you have an attic above the third floor.
I think we can do that.
I, I think we'll just need to make sure that what you're suggesting can still be done and stay beneath 40 feet.
And meet it, I understand.
They've only got about two feet of clearance, so I'm not sure they can get all that up there.
Well, I don't think we wanna, I mean, I, I don't know that our intention is to dictate what the profile is right now. I think we're just trying to say that there's a lot of potential.
Sure.
Yeah, we're just throwing out some ideas.
And it's appreciated, yes.
I mean, as simple as, you know, down on the first floor, there could be a, an awning or canopy which breaks it up again, brings in another color. At some point, if there's a business, the business could go on there. Goose neck lighting, which ties it into a lot of the other businesses in the town. Blade signage, which is something that we just recently approved in the last year or so, could go ahead and give direction to people walking on the sidewalks. So those are just some things that can enhance it and some of them are more expensive, some of them are less expensive, you would never use all of them, but a couple of them combined together should give the desired effect. And I think you've got a, a nice list now, Bruce. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to entertain a motion to, for planning and zoning, item 18-023, a request from Dr. Hussain regarding the property at 16 West Burlington for a site plan review, and I'd like to ask for motion for continuance, please.
So move.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Sharp, second by Commissioner Bartel. Uh, motion by Commissioner Sharp, second by Commissioner Bartel. Questions or comments on the motion?
Uh, just that we should specify the date of the continuance will be January 9th, 2019.
And if they need longer, they should take that with the holidays and everything coming in here, if that's going to be a real, real problem.
That can be, if it's done longer, we would just reopen and recontinue it, right?
Correct. Technically, this is not a public hearing item, because it's not a variance special use rezoning, it's just site plan approval. So anytime they're ready, we can just pop it back on the agenda.
Great. So you'll have great flexibility then at meeting, in case you're traveling or whatever might be your personal schedules.
As I said, I want to get this.
Understood. So our next meeting is the 9th. So anyway, all right, I have a, uh, motion and a second, and it's to continue to January 9th. Is there any comment or further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill?
Yes. All right. So what we've done now is we've continued this discussion, and you will now work with Bruce. He's given some ideas. You, the four of you, or however big the team is, he has staff also, will be able to go back and forth, and would love to see some great plans and some, uh, some, uh, I, I would like to encourage you to make sure that when these are submitted, we get our plans on Friday before. We do like to see color renderings in there, because it's very hard to look at things in black and white sometimes with this kind of detail. So try to make sure this makes it to the packet, um, before the meeting, so that we can have a good couple of days to read it over and study it, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a wonderful holiday, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, all three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope your car is okay, too.
Thank you.
Certainly. All righty, uh, that concludes our new business for this evening. Um, under miscellaneous items, do we have anything from staff?
Nothing to report, although I am going to try in the new year to, um, put together some brief reports, maybe even just handouts, to give people status updates on projects that have come through here previously, so.
Yeah, that's good.
I haven't had time to do that yet, but.
And through Larry Forsberg, were you able to see an example of one of those? Those are great. They're snapshot and they're easy just to update as you move along. Super. Anybody have anything else? So our next meeting is January 9th, followed by February 13th. Please let us know. I'll assume everybody will be here unless I hear from you otherwise. And like just to take this time to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy Holiday, and, uh, and a Happy New Year. All righty. Uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second?
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Van Buren. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? We stand adjourned. Thank you.